November 20th, 2017, to order is the second meeting of the month of the Village Board. Can everybody please rise?
Are we gonna take attendance?
Yeah, take attendance first.
Roll for it? Sit down.
I'm jumping the gun. You can all sit down for a minute. Just kidding.
It was a test.
Exercises before we start. Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Mayor McCloud. Present. Now, everybody can please rise. Trustee Newell, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Newell. Move on to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is the time or place if someone has a concern or question for an item that is not on the agenda this evening that you want addressed to the Village Board or the Village Staff, now's the time to come forward. Going once, twice, three times, we'll move on. Move on to item four, approval of the minutes, November 6th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's a motion to second. Any additions or corrections to these minutes? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. The special meeting of November 13th, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion to second, any questions on these? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's a motion to second. The items on the consent agenda are 5A, approval of the agenda. 5B, approval of the schedule of bills for November 20th, 2017, in the amount of $4,622,395.95. 5C, request board approval for staff to proceed with negotiations for a design-build contract with Quantum Science for designing and construction of two gateway signs in the 5990 entertainment district. And 5D, request board approval for staff to proceed on a redesign of the village website with vision, including recommended upgrades. There is a motion to second. Any questions on any of these items? See none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McCloud.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to six, President's Report. I believe we have some proclamations.
I started out. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates in Illinois celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 63 percent of new, net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small business employs over 48 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, on average, 33 percent of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas 91 percent of all customers believe that supporting small, independently owned restaurants and bars is important, and whereas 76 percent of all consumers plan to patronize one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping strategy. And whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McCloud, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates join in its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion, thank you. The representatives of our local chamber come up by the podium there. We appreciate the contributions that the small businesses make to our community and all the jobs they provide. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. Mr. O'Brien, you want to say a few words?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so very much and board. We are very excited with the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce and Industry. On Small Business Saturday this week, we are doing a little new promotion for everyone in the community. What we are doing, if you shop at a Chamber member's business, large or small restaurant, maybe you want to buy insurance, or you go to Cabela's, and bring your receipt to the Chamber of Commerce, anytime within the next two weeks, you will be entered in a very fabulous drawing, and it will be for two tickets for our upcoming Bon Appetit Food and Drink Festival at our very famous Stonegate Conference and Banquet Center right here in Hoffman Estates. So, please bring your receipt. It has to be on Saturday. We have to do the shopping on Saturday, and if you do buy an insurance policy, we don't need to see all the particulars of it. So, thank you so very much, Mayor. We are very, very excited to receive this.
So, someone can go on your website and find out if a business belongs to the Chamber.
Yes, they certainly can, and I did bring additional community guides that are right outside the, in the Village Hall, in the brochure racks for everyone this evening.
Okay, there's a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. (applause)
Okay, picture time.
Picture. Don't run away, Tricia. Come on, you guys get up here. I'm sure they'll send you a copy.
You bet. All right, everybody ready? Here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas Giving Tuesday was established as the National Day of Giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And whereas Giving Tuesday is the celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favored causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and every other day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy and volunteerism and community service in the Village of Hoffman Estates. And whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Whereas in 2016, the fifth year of Giving Tuesday, millions of people in 98 countries came together to give back and support the causes they believe, they believe in. Over 177 million was raised online to benefit a tremendously broad range of organizations, and much more was given in volunteer hours, donations of food and clothing, and acts of kindness. Let's do even more in 2017. Be therefore resolved that William D. McCloud, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim November 28th, 2017, as Giving Tuesday in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates to join in its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
It's a motion to second. We appreciate the generosity of the folks who live in our community, who volunteer, who donate money. I think every day is a giving day in Hoffman Estates. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. Dr. Savija, will you accept this? Thank you, and thank you for the work your department does. I have, one of the best parts of this job of being mayor is the Great Citizen Award. Is Ms. Ella Steele here in the audience? Could you come on up to the podium here? You can bring your mom and dad and family. You guys can all come up, come on. Just, can you go right over there, by the, where the microphone is? We won't be able to see you.
I can see her forehead.
Here's what happened. The mayor's office received a call early last month from local resident Susie DeBeau Bryant about a young student in her neighborhood who displayed great citizen material. Ms. DeBeau witnessed Ella Steele clearing off a sidewalk that had built up a significant amount of dirt, essentially making the sidewalk impassable. Ella was determined to resolve the issue and took it upon herself to clean up the situation. A little about Ella. Ella Rose attends John Muir Literacy Academy in Hoffman Estates. She loves to play softball, basketball, dance, tumble, and be with her friends and cousins. Ella loves to help people and is always willing to jump in to do so. She goes to school one time per week in AM to help out the fourth grade classroom, and two times per week she works with the ASD children in their class, the Autism Student Program. They love having their friend Ella in their class to read, help them, and just play. So, the Village of Hoffman Estates is proud to present the Great Citizen Award to Ella Steele on Monday, November 20th, 2017, in recognition of her efforts in clearing a frequently used sidewalk in the Hilldale Green Estates subdivision. Ella recognized the need and took it upon herself to brush off the path covered in a mound of dirt, thus making the walkway easy for people to walk on. Ella's efforts exemplify what it means to be a great citizen, and we applaud her for doing her part in helping the Village of Hoffman Estates continue to grow to greatness. Thank you very much, Ella. You set a great example for everyone in our community. Come on, Mom, Dad, everybody, come on. Thank you, Ella. Appreciate it. Hey, Bud, how are you? Come on, Ella, come back, we got a picture. Come on, everybody, let's get a picture.
Oh, you didn't go shake ass. Here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I am in receipt of a letter from the Haveford Place Homeowners Association. Dear Mayor, the Haveford Homeowners Association Board, on behalf of all our association residents, would like to profoundly thank you and Joe Nebel, Director of Public Works, for your continued support each year in connection with our woodland area cleanup efforts. For the past several years, the village crew has promptly picked up and disposed of all the tree and bush branches that our volunteers gather and collect as part of our neighborhood woodland maintenance and restoration project. The delivery of wood chips each year is also greatly appreciated by all of us. The Public Works crews really do a fine job in terms of service to the community, and we just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge that to everyone involved. Thanks again. Respectfully, Thomas, a quick, President Haveford HOA. Congratulations, Joe, thank you. I think President Quick just has said what we all think about Public Works and the great job you do, and I'll certainly bask in your reflective glory, but you guys do the work, so we do appreciate that. I want to congratulate the Hoffman Estates High School Hawks for making it to the semifinals of the state 6A championship, and we need to do a reception for them soon, expeditiously. And that's quite a run. They did really do a great job, and they basically ended up in the semifinals playing the equivalent of the New England Patriots, so they did amazingly well. I'd also like to congratulate the Montana State Bobcats, who defeated the University of Montana Grizzlies. My wife is a proud Montana State Bobcat, and this was quite an amazing victory. Take that, Walt Parker. He lives in Minneapolis, so he's not going to see the program anyway, but I'm sure Joni will tell him about it. I had the opportunity this past week to attend the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, Services Committee meeting of the National League of Cities. On Friday evening, I attended the promotion reception for Senior Executive Anell Pandja that was held at the Pearl Banquet Hall in Roselle. And on Saturday, we had a terrific tree lighting. Congratulations to Chairperson Bev Romanoff, our village clerk, and all the members of our committee. It gets better and better every year, and the fireworks were just sensational. This evening, I attended the Brookdale Senior Living Pie and Wine Event and got a pecan pie for Thanksgiving, which was very nice. Then we had the Citizens Fire Academy graduation this evening. I do have some resignations. Keith Kaposius from the Sustainability Commission, chair would accept a motion?
So moved with regrets.
Second.
It's a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. Donna Boomgarden from the Fourth of July Commission, chair would accept a motion?
So moved with regrets.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. Mike Boomgarden from the Fourth of July Commission.
So moved with regrets.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Steve, we offer from the Planning and Zoning Commission, chair would accept a motion?
So moved with regret.
I'll second.
There's a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have a motion carried. And that's really all I have for right now. Move on to six B, trustee comments. Start with trustee Gata.
Oh, okay. We have a few things over here. On Tuesday, the 7th, the Center for Enriched Living Northwest Open House at Church of the Cross, which was at 475 West Higgins, and trustee Gary Stanton attended that with me. And then also, on Tuesday that evening, Haveford Place had their annual board meeting, which I attended. Then on Wednesday, the 8th, the Schaumburg Regional Airport Advisory Commission meeting at Schaumburg Airport. Then on Friday, the 10th, St. Hubert's Veterans Day Assembly at the school with, again, trustee Gary Stanton was there, and boy, they really had a good turnout, the same thing that they did even last year, Mayor, because you were out of town. And then on Friday, the 10th, also, Veterans Flag Dedication at the company right here, CDK Global Headquarters, which is right here at 1950 Hassel Road. They also gave us a tour of the place, and what I was amazed at, that they have over 850 employees right here at their headquarters. And I was very impressed with them, and they had a wall honoring the veterans that worked there at CDK. Let's see, then on Saturday, the 11th, here, the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Police Department, Police Station. Even though it was cold outside, we still had a good turnout. Then on Wednesday, the 15th, School District 54 had their 23rd Annual Partnership Breakfast, which started at 7:00 AM in the morning.
In Elk Grove Village, too.
In Elk Grove Village, right. And I was the only one from Hoffman Estates, but they honored our Police Department, and they honored our Fire Department there, which we were very honored for that. And then, let's see, also on the 15th, we had the Harvest Luncheon that was put on by the Senior Citizens Commission, and it was at Stonegate Banquet Center, which an excellent turnout. The meal was excellent, everybody had a good time from that standpoint. And we even had our own Bruce Anderson to say the blessing, which was surprising, in addition to being the video part of it. So, and also to congratulate the Senior Citizens Commission. Then on Saturday, the 18th, we had the Marie Antoinette Program at the Bridges of Poplar Creek, put on by the Sister Cities Commission. Wow, what a beautiful presentation that was. And the room was full, room was full. If you ever get the opportunity where this gal portrays Marie Antoinette, take the opportunity to go, because it was very interesting listening to her with her accent and talking about that period of time, right? Even though she had her head removed.
Didn't end well for Marie Antoinette, did it?
Also, on Saturday, we attended the Friendship Tree Lighting here at Village Hall, which is always excellent. That's all I have, Mayor.
That's all?
That's all.
Trustee Newell.
And there was one other thing, and that was the pie at...
Brookdale.
Brookdale, Brookdale, yes.
And Cirque, you went to Cirque?
No.
Cirque du Soleil.
Oh, Cirque du Soleil, yeah. That was, that's on a personal note, though. Oh, I went to Cirque du Soleil, and where's Ben? Was he in here?
Ben's back there.
Ben? That crowd was unbelievable, and so was that show. I was so glad that my wife said I had to go, right? But that's all I had.
You showed good judgment, trustee Gata.
Now I'm done.
Trustee Newell, now you have the floor.
All right, okay, so we'll start on the 7th. 11/7 was the Sustainability Meeting. 11/8 was the Utility Meeting. And the 9th was the Beer Brat and Beethoven, thanks to the Arts Commission, which basically was good food, good people, and good music. It was a really enjoyable event. On the 11th, we had the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Police Department, which it's always, always a truly moving ceremony. Then on the 18th, of course, the Marie Antoinette Presentation put on by the Sister Cities, and that definitely, as trustee Gata said, it does take you back in time. It was amazing. Then you're going to the tree lighting and the fireworks, which thank you to the Celebrations Commission and the Boy Scouts. That was amazing. Good crowd, a little breezy, but it was beautiful as usual. On the 19th, my husband and I did go to the Cirque du Soleil Crystal Presentation, and it was awesome. It's just to see it and the music and the lights and just the people, everybody was like so quiet, you couldn't hear a pin drop, and then all of a sudden, just everything explodes. It was great. It was really awesome. On the 20th, which is today, congrats to the Fire Academy. Also stopped by the pie event at Brookdale, and last but not least, happy Thanksgiving to one and all, and safe and happy travels. That's all I have.
Trustee Palafas.
Thank you, sir. Today, I attended the HEOC meeting, which is up to 22 members from 13 different agencies. So, we're having some great participation there for the underprivileged in town and under-resourced. Tonight, we had a Speedy Plots Concert Meeting for next year's event. It's hard to really dig in, and it's not even Thanksgiving yet for next year, but we did some good planning. Congratulations to all of our graduates from the Fire Academy. Many thanks to all of our firefighters and staff for all they do to manage the success of the classes. Congratulations to Chief Jorian for attending his last Village Board Meeting.
Lucky duck.
Chief, that's right. If you ever want to come and visit us on Monday night at 7, you'll know where to find us.
Ask the chief a standing ovation.
You know you're going to miss us.
Chief says he's going to take the Citizens Police Academy class.
That's right.
Public Works Academy. Trustee Mills.
On the 9th, I've attended the Heavenly Brew Fest over at Stonegate, which was the fundraiser for Shop With a Cop, and we had a great turnout for that. And then headed over to the Beer Brats and Beethoven at the arena, which also had a great crowd. Thank you to the Arts Commission for a great night. 11th was the Veterans Day Ceremony, and the Veterans Commission, trustee Palafas is part of, did a good job. It's always a moving ceremony. The 15th, again, is at the Harvest Luncheon over at Stonegate, where we had an excellent lunch and entertainment that day. It was a great event, as always. The Senior Commission can't do anything wrong with that one. And Bruce did an excellent job with the blessing that day. We were very proud of him. That evening, I had Northwest Mosquito Abatement District meetings. On the 7th, on the 17th, I should say, was at the Chambers Celebration Committee Meeting for that event that's coming up in January, and hope everybody will be there. On the 18th, we had the Friendship Tree Lighting, and as everybody said, Celebrations did a super job with that one. And can't say enough about Cirque du Soleil Crystal. It was an excellent performance. I've always enjoyed Cirque shows, and to see it on ice was spectacular. Thank you for bringing that to our town. On the 20th, we had, today, we had the Citizens Fire Academy. Congrats to the Hoffman Estates Hawks Football Team, they brought pride to our town. And Chief Jorian, good luck to you. We will miss your smiling face, but every time I see that bullseye blanket at a Bears game, I will be thinking of you. Good luck.
Good son.
No, I didn't see it at all, I don't think.
You can only do so much.
Right. And last but not least, thanks, happy Thanksgiving to all. Enjoy the long weekend. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Stanton.
Thank you. As trustee Gata indicated, on the 7th of November, he and I attended the Open House for the Center for Enriched Living located at the Church of the Cross at 475 West Higgins Road. It was a, we also got a tour, and Mayor, you and I were there previously and got the tour, and it was basically the same tour. They had changed a few things in the basement for the kids that are going to be there. This is a place where 22 and older children or adults, young adults, will be there who are challenged, and they have a place to go now within our Northwest community, and it's a great place. Okay, on the 9th of November, I attended the Beer Brats and Beethoven with my wife, and I want to thank the Arts Commission and the Sears Center staff who helped put this all on. It was a great, great show. On the 10th of November, I was able to attend the St. Hubert's Veteran Day Assembly with trustee Gata, and Illinois Representative Michelle Musman was also there. And they did have an extended amount of veterans that were also there who were honored. Mike was one of them as well. They had them all stand up and called their names out, so it was a very nice ceremony. And, let's see, also on the 11th, I was able to attend the Veterans Day Ceremony at our Hoffman Estates Police Station. On the 18th of November, I was able to attend the Friendship Tree Lighting Ceremony, and I want to thank the Celebrations, Celebrations Commission for a wonderful job, as they always do. On the, today's date, I was able to stop over at the Brookdale Senior Living Facility for their pie and wine event. And then tonight, we had the graduation for the Citizens Fire Academy. I want to congratulate all those that made it through the program. And, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And while we were mentioning the Hoffman Estates Hawks for making it to the semifinals, I want to congratulate my alma mater, Loyola Academy, who is actually playing in the finals this Saturday.
Oh, we'll be rooting for them.
I will be. Thanks.
Trustee Arnett.
Also, on the 9th, I attended the Heavenly Brew Fest at Stonegate for the Shop With a Cop. It's an awesome event, and they had a very good crowd. Then I followed over to the Beer Brat and Beethoven at the Sears Center, very nicely, very nicely run. Good job setting everything up for the Sisters Commission. And then on the 11th, I also attended the Veterans Ceremony at the PD. Very nice turnout, and it was exceptionally cold, but we love our veterans. Followed by, tonight, I did the, or I'm sorry, Saturday, the 18th, I did attend the tree lighting, and thank you to the Boy Scouts who helped with the actual lighting, and our Fire Department for bringing Santa in nice and safe, and for the fireworks show. And tonight, I, and actually Saturday night, I did attend the Cirque du Soleil, so Ben, if you could actually bring that back in a couple of years, that would be greatly appreciated. Tonight, I attended the Fire Academy graduation. Good luck to all of the graduates, and hopefully we can get some new alumni members. And great job for the Hoffman Hawks, my alma mater. And come back next year even stronger. And happy, healthy, and Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, trustee Arnett. You guys have been busy, as you always are. Move on to exceed the Village Manager's Report.
Just two things, Mayor. To follow up on an item that was considered at Planning, Building, and Zoning, and then by the Board, the agreement to have CMAP do the assessment of fair housing, that was actively discussed at PB&Z. CMAP has now decided that they cannot carry through with that on behalf of all the entitlement CDBG communities. It does look like a smaller group is going to be forming to try to work on that, but what happened is that the federal Housing and HUD basically said that they couldn't do it as a contractor, they'd have to be a subrecipient, which means that the paperwork goes from a manageable stack about this big to probably up to the ceiling, and they just decided that they couldn't do it if that was the case. So, that's going to set us back a little bit, as it will every community over 50,000. There were 20 communities signed on. Now we're going to have to regroup and see what, what we're going to do. The second thing is happy Thanksgiving to you and your families.
Thank you. Move on to six D, Village Clerk's Report.
No report tonight.
Pick yourselves off the floor. I'm too busy writing.
I'm stunned. Okay. Six C, Treasurers Report.
Sorry, the village treasurer has prepared his report for September, and it's ready for your review.
for your review.
Chair will accept a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
I make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report.
There's a second. Any questions on the Treasurer's Report? See none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to six F Committee Reports. Finance, Trustee Palafas.
On November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, at seven PM here in the Boardroom, we will call to order via roll call the Finance Committee. We will ask for an approval of the minutes from October twenty-third, twenty seventeen. We have four items at this time under new business. The first is request approval of ordinance amending the municipal code to include liquor license, interview fees, and amending the Basset Certification validity period from twenty-four to thirty-six months. Items two, three, and four will be a request for acceptance of the Finance Department Monthly Report, Information Systems Department Monthly Report, and the Sears Center Monthly Report, after which we will ask for a President's Report, any items and other that are not on the agenda for folks to come up and address the committee. We have no items in review, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you. Move on to Public Works and Utilities, Trustee Newell.
Immediately following Finance, we will have the Public Works and Utility Committee meet for November twenty-seventh. We will have a roll call and approval of minutes from October twenty-third, twenty seventeen. Under new business, there will be five items. Item number one, request authorization to award contract for State of Illinois joint purchase of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen winter road salt to Morton Salt Incorporated out of Chicago, Illinois, at a unit price of forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents per ton in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Item number two will be request authorization to award contract for twenty seventeen electronic message sign upgrade, bid opening eleven fourteen seventeen. Item number three, request authorization to waive bidding and purchase sidewalks, snow removal tractor through Burris Equipment out of Joliet, Illinois, using the NJPA contract discount in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. Item four and five are request acceptance of the Department of Public Works Monthly Report, and five would be the request acceptance of the Department of Development Services Monthly Engineering Report of the Transportation and Engineering Division. If the President will have anything in addition, nothing under other or items in review, and we will adjourn.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Trustee Gata.
Yes, immediately following Public Works and Utility Committee, the Public Health and Safety Committee will hold their meeting on November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. We will have a roll call, then we will have approval of the minutes of October twenty-third, twenty seventeen. Under new business, we have four items. First item is request acceptance of the Police Department Monthly Report. Number two, request acceptance of the Health and Human Services Monthly Report. Three, request acceptance of Emergency Management Coordinator Monthly Report. Four, request acceptance of the Fire Department Monthly Report. We will have a President's Report, if there's anything and other or items in review, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you. Move on to seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Reports. Chair Bruce Combs. Good evening.
Good evening.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by Hoffman Estates Real Estate LLC owner for a special use under section nine dash eight dash five dash C dash one dash F of the zoning code for a gas station located at the southeast corner of Hoffman Boulevard and Old Sutton Road, extended six As, five Absent.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions from Trustee Stanton?
When are they planning on opening? First of December?
Which year?
This year.
Did you say December first?
No.
First week of December.
First week of December.
Okay. There was some confusion about who actually was the principal in this deal. We had dueling people coming in claiming that it was their gas station. Are we sure this is the real person?
That I have no idea. I know that it's changed hands a number of times before we've gotten to this part.
Mr. Gugliotta, are you the founder of all wisdom on this issue?
I can try, as best I can. Yes, this is the, the actual owner of the property. There were prospective tenants who were going to operate the gas station that had contracts with the owner that apparently fell through.
They had appointments with all of them. It got to be very confusing.
Yes, there were prospective tenants that were gonna be the gas station operator. None of those business deals worked out, and at this time, the property owner is going to be the one to open the gas station and operate.
Is the property owner here this evening?
I believe so, yes.
Come up and identify yourself for the record. Who are?
Janade Ahmed, Hoffman Estates Real Estate LLC.
Okay, and you are the owner?
Correct.
Okay. That's encouraging. I know people are waiting for that gas station to open. It's, it's really been frustrating for people. I'm sure it's frustrating for you, too, but...
Yes.
So hopefully you'll get it done.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? See none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by McMaster Faganal Custom Homes LLC applicant and Anthony Perato owner for a plat of consolidation and a site plan amendment to construct a single-family home on the property located at sixteen ninety-four and seventeen hundred Pondview Drive in Devonshire Woods Estates with nine conditions. There were six As, five absent.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one?
I do have a comment to make. In reading over the finding, and the finding of fact, underfounding, there's some mention of what the Commissioners asked, but we never get any answers as to what the answers were given to the Commissioners. And that disappoints me. I'd like to, you know, when I read this, I'd like to find out what the people were actually saying. So I would like a little more information about it next time, when they start writing these up.
Okay. Is there anything else? See nothing else, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by McMaster Faganal Custom Homes LLC applicant and Anthony Perato owner for a variation from section nine dash three dash six dash K dash two of the zoning code to permit the construction of an eight hundred forty-eight square foot attached garage instead of the seven hundred fifty maximum square feet allowed by code at sixteen ninety-four and seventeen hundred Pondview Drive in Devonshire Woods Estates. There were six As, five absent.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one? Trustee Mills.
Why is the larger garage needed?
They needed it because they have enough cars to fill it, for one, and two, they also anticipate the need for a ramp, because their elderly parents live with them.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Trustee Stanton, too. I'd really like to see the answers to those questions, so we know what's going in. We don't have to ask it all over again.
Yes, we will make sure we address that more thoroughly in the future.
Anything else? See nothing else, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend for approval, a request by Atasca Bank and Trust Company, trust number one two five five one, owner in Stonegate Properties, Inc., applicant for a site plan amendment for a second drive-through on the property located at two oh six one two 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 oh seven one North Barrington Road with five conditions. Vote was two As, four Nays, five Absent.
Hey, Corporation Council, what's the deal here? This was a negative recommendation from the...
Two-thirds.
The motion to deny. Oh, it should have been fair.
We need two-thirds.
To overturn the denial.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, two things. On the agenda itself, inadvertently, when this was being put together for items C and D, it says motions carried. They did not. They obviously failed.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Chair will accept a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's Report.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion is a second. Any discussion on this? See no discussion, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
So this is gonna be a yes, mean no?
Yes is sustaining the denial, yes.
Mr. Moser's got his arm up.
Yes. Mr. Moser, just identify yourself for the record.
Your Honor, trustees, Village Manager.
Is that my gun?
And Treasurer's.
Mine says it is. Would you check?
My name is George Moser. Is this, sir?
Tap it, Pete.
Yes, sir.
First of all, we think if the Plan Committee, the Plan and Zoning Commission had had, all their members there would have passed. There were five absent, but in any event, we have Jimmy Johns here today. They're the ones that are looking to go in to the space. They've given us, we've been working on this since May, I believe, May twenty-fifth, is that right?
You identify yourself, sir?
I'm sorry. My, my name is Wendell Holland. I'm with CBRE, and I'm the leasing agent, agent for the subject property.
Okay.
I didn't know you were there.
That's okay.
We built the building exactly the way it is now. It's a very prominent building. We built a two-story retail building, which generally, they're a single-story with a flat roof, because it's a prominent location. We have always had two drive-ins in that building. We don't understand what's going on, to put it plain English. We had the Starbucks, which we have the drive-in there, open and operating. We also had the bank drive-in, which is, was busier than the Jimmy Johns, and also Jimmy Johns will have less people there than we had when we had the other occupants of the building. So we don't understand. Also, Mayor O'Malley asked me when we put the building in to use cross-parking between the hotel, which we brought in our master design in Northwest Corporate Center in this building, so we have all the parking, we never had a parking problem. So I don't know what the, what the problem is with this. We think it's a great addition. We have the operator here today with Jimmy Johns, and we're ready to go. I mean, we just need approval to move ahead, so I guess, I guess that's all there is, right?
Unless there's any other questions.
Are there any other questions? Trustee Stanton.
I did drive by there this evening, and I did notice the two drive-throughs, and I was the chairman of the Plan Commission when the building was actually built back in two thousand and six.
Good. It's a long time.
Well, don't say good, because I voted against it at that time. But it is there now. And let me ask you, have you ever had any complaints from Starbucks regarding when the bank was in there and the, the other drive-through was working?
None at all, ever. That's the way it was designed from the beginning.
And how many people use the bank as far as parking purposes?
We had more, because we had the bank, and we had travelics in there also. And if I might just expand, the bank had eight employees, which were pretty much there for the entirety of the day, unlike in the case of Jimmy Johns. It might also expand... And there was a travel agency in there as well. Right. Which had about a dozen. Jimmy Johns isn't even gonna have a fourth of what we had in there.
Well, how many employees is Jimmy Johns going to have?
During their peak periods, they will have six employees, three in the store, and three that deliver continuously.
Okay, where are the cars for the delivery gonna be?
In the Northwest Corporate Center. That's where the deliveries, they will queue up there.
So not on-site? They'll be off-site?
Not on-site. But we're planning from on-site.
And where are the employees going to park?
The employees are also going, they've committed to parking also in the Northwest Corporate Center.
Okay, so the back's parking spaces will be available for people as well?
That's correct.
For customers. It's not necessarily convenient, but at least they're there.
I might also add... I park back there once in a while. It's open. It's nice. Starbucks is just, just, for everyone's information, they have just renewed, and not for a five-year option period. They requested to renew for a ten-year period, because they're, they're going to remodel the location and actually invest several hundred thousand dollars in their existing location, so they wanted to have a longer period of time to amortize that, that investment, which we were very happy to do. It's also, the, I believe, the leading Starbucks thug in the metropolitan area... It's a very high volume Starbucks. Sales. So they're very happy.
And are they aware that Jimmy Johns is possibly going there as well? Okay. And have they made any comments to you regarding the fact that Jimmy Johns is going in there?
They're happy. The only complaints has been road construction from Starbucks, so...
The Berryton Road. That's from all of us. That's Georgia's fault, too. He wanted it.
Thanks. They actually like the Code Tennessee. Why not? Eighty percent of their business is complete, completed by ten AM in the morning, whereas Jimmy Johns is not open. They don't open till eleven. Their hours are eleven AM to nine PM, and indulge me, I'm suffering from a little bit of a cold here, so... It's, it's not even close. It's compatible with respect to traffic, we think.
All right, I think Trustee Mills had mentioned to me a few, a few conditions that she would like to add, I think. So I'll pass it to Trustee Mills, if that's okay with the mayor.
It's fine by me.
Okay, first of all, several of these conditions that were put on the Plan Commission, or the Planning and Zoning Commission Report, have those been addressed at all?
Really, nothing has changed since the Plan Commission was last Wednesday. There's, there's no new information.
So, and you, and you, as a petitioner, agree to these conditions?
I don't know.
All the conditions that are, were on here?
Yes. Doug Altenberger says yes.
Okay. One thing, I was looking at the, the diagram of it, and are you planning, or have you thought about doing any type of signage? Where the two lanes converge? You know, one's gonna be going this way, and the Jimmy Johns is really gonna be going, it's almost like a cross, across there.
We've had it that way for years, and it works fine.
But, but it's a different type of clientele that'll be coming through here now. I know you had the bank there with the drive-through window.
And the people that would put a credit card in or put some deposit in there or whatever can pick up a sandwich.
Right, but, if you let me finish on this one, you're gonna be having cars driving closer to the, the wall on the left side to use the drive-through for Jimmy Johns. And then you're gonna be possibly having people going around them for Starbucks.
They always went around them. There's another lane there.
All right, let me, there is another lane there. That's what I'm trying to get at. There is another lane there. And then you're going to have people going to the drive-through for Starbucks. You're gonna be having people coming from Jimmy Johns to go around, because they're not gonna wanna go through the drive-through lane that the Starbucks clientels are going in.
Right. They, we, that's...
They're going to be wanting to go the other way around.
It's the same way.
No, it's two different ways. I mean...
Trustee Mills, uh, if I might, and I think more to the point, uh, staff recommended, as did the Plan Commission, for us to collaborate with them to come up with a way-finding signage program?
Yeah.
And we said absolutely.
I mean, you almost have to have stop signs right there where they converge, and then actual signage showing Jimmy John's customers go this way, Starbucks goes this way.
So we did agree to, again, collaborate with staff, uh, and come up with an effective way-finding signage program.
Okay. And that's what you two have under consideration too?
Well, they, they, in their application materials, they said that, that they, they would do that. Um, we have not seen anything, and it's really up to them to propose something. Obviously, we'll offer our guidance that we can provide input on, but, um, we don't, we haven't seen anything, so it's very hard for us to comment on the effectiveness of that.
And we will work with KLOA, which did the original, uh, traffic analysis in 2006. They will assist us in coming up with that, with that program.
We did three.
All right. On that condition regarding the signage, possibly we need to be, be a little stronger in that and, and put something in there about occupancy permit wouldn't be released until it's been put together?
Yes, I'm sorry. Which, what number is?
I think it's number three.
Three? Sorry.
Because that's asking for the comprehensive way-finding plan.
Yes. So our, our intention is, as part of any permit, they would need to submit the plan, um, so that, that would be, need to be resolved on, on paper before we issue the building permit.
Okay.
Um, but you're correct. I, we did not address the, the signage needs to be in place before occupancy. Um, I, I should highlight that I don't, without having seen anything, um, there are signage, they can't use advertising signage, obviously, because then it starts to get into, uh, sign code requirements. So we, you know, we aren't exactly sure how, how this will work completely, but, um, I, I, we, I would add, I definitely would add, um...
I'll make that motion to, to, uh, add that, that verbiage to condition number three.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second for this amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The aye seven? It's been added.
Sure, you want to add it?
This is a three.
Okay, yeah.
I also wanted to bring up the fact that there is not a parking easement.
That's my next question. And the next question was, um, there was reference to employees parking back behind there, but I think if that's going to be the case, it needs to be addressed as a condition.
And it has to be recorded, since this easement tends to disappear.
Yeah.
Three traffic studies that included parking, they all, I mean, there's so many conditions on this, it's unbelievable. We're putting in a sandwich shop. Mayor O'Malley is the one that said, um, the hotel, Northwest Corporate Center, and this, and the Starbucks. We, we cooperate, we have no problem in any of it. We don't need the parking.
Well, having driven through there many times, you do need some extra parking.
There's virtually no parking on the site.
Yeah.
And the front is all, uh, Starbucks. That's all.
Right. Now you're going to be adding to that. That's what we're talking about.
No, but we're not adding anything. This is the original plan that was in there.
I know it is, but you're adding more cars, more traffic.
No, we're not. No, we have...
All right, then I'll just leave it go.
Okay, all right.
And if I might on that, on that specific point, uh, when it was approved back in 2006, it was referenced in the, I guess findings of fact that because the petitioner also owns the office building directly adjacent to the west, they have the ability to provide overflow parking if needed. Um, based upon the expected parking demand at this building, proposed parking is adequate for this development, which at that time did not include a Jimmy Johns.
No, it didn't.
But, but ownership is certainly willing to, and actually are directing the tenants for the employee parking, as well as their drive-through. That's where you queue, or that's where you park and queue up. So they're, they want to continue that relationship.
Right. And this would be the first place we've required that as a condition, and that employees have to be parking elsewhere and behind a building. So that was the only reason I was putting it in there, because one of your fir, your very first condition is saying that they want some new off-site parking easement, or an existing easement document. And the one we have in our packet predates this. It doesn't refer to this building. That's the only thing.
Right. This, this building came in 2006, well after Mayor O'Malley had passed away.
No, but we had all, we're on the master plan, remember?
Right. So when we looked at, and when Corporation Counsel, and I'm not going to speak for him, even though he thinks I do a lot, um, looked at the existing old easement, um, parking agreement, he didn't think it referenced this building specifically, and that if that was going to happen to do what you want to do with the Jimmy John's employees, it either needed to be amended to do that, or need, a new one, a simp, it could be a very simple one, needed to be done between this building ownership and, uh, Northwest Corporate Center. Very simple.
We, we can, we've been working on this since May 25th.
This has been an issue that we have brought up as staff to numerous people, numerous times.
We, we want to move ahead with Jimmy Johns. They're here tonight.
This can be done as a condition.
Then, a condition, all right.
So if the, if you can't get a shared parking agreement, then the board needs to know that.
All right. But we'll be able to put Jimmy Johns in if we get approval?
If you get a shared parking, well, if they vote yes, if that's a condition, and if the board ultimately votes yes, then the answer is yes, you could put Jimmy Johns in.
All right.
But that's the, that's the issue that trustee Mills is raising. That's an issue...
Right, no, I understand.
That's been raised by the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff for, actually, we said this for the first time to the brokers out at the ICSC in Las Vegas in May of this last year. It, it's been known by that team since May of last year, of this, of '17.
Corporation Counsel, do you have any words of wisdom to add?
No, only as to the, um, legality of, uh, the shared parking agreement, just so everybody understands, it would have to be between the owners of both parcels of property, and it would have to be subordinated to any mortgages or liens on the property. So obviously you'd have to get the signatures of all those parties.
Who owns the Northwest Corporate Center now, do we know?
We do.
You're still own it?
Yes.
Is there anything, uh, further? Trustee Mills?
Do we want to put on a condition to that effect?
Yeah, I would think so.
Then I will make that motion to, again, amend the conditions to include, uh, an up, well, it's already in there, that we have the updated, correct?
Can't do that.
Right. Condition number one is...
Right.
It speaks to that issue.
And that we wanted to address employee parking, correct?
Well, it's, it's really all parking in general.
Okay.
The parking report that they submitted from their consultant basically said during peak periods, the number of spaces they need for the three tenants in this building will exceed what the site has. So they, they, they need to have more parking than the site has, whether it be for employees or, or tenants or whoever.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How did this get approved? I'm, I'm flabbergasted. We had the building, we had more in there than we have, than we're proposing. We had three traffic studies done, and that's right?
Yeah, honestly, the, the original...
All said that it would work fine, including parking.
And that was based on...
I give up.
That was based on projections. At the time the building was built, um, we were given projections, including a, a coffee shop.
Studies were done now.
Right. So we, we, when the building was originally approved, there were parking and traffic projections done, and that's what the board used to base their approval on. Um, they updated that with the Jimmy Johns, comparing that to the original report, and counting existing traffic to the existing Starbucks.
This is my son, George.
Hi, this is George Moser with Stonegate Properties. I do have a question. I, you're, you're condemning this building, is what you're doing.
That's what's happening.
You're effectively condemning this building, because what you are doing is, you're telling us that you need additional parking for a space that you've already approved. There's no other reason other than a drive-through. There's no reason to add additional parking because of the drive-through.
We will need less parking.
I don't think, I, I, let's take a step back. I don't think anybody's saying what you're saying, with all due respect.
Well, then what is the purpose of...
If your own consultant, traffic consultant, said at peak times, given the new uses, that it'll exceed the amount of parking available on the site, it's legitimate municipal authority to ask how you're going to handle that. How it's traditionally handled by any other petitioner is shared parking with the next-door neighbor. Any municipality you go to, if you get, your consultant gave us a study that said you're, don't, you don't have enough parking during peak times, don't have a quibble with us, have a quibble with your consultant.
No, I, I've got a quibble because...
Secondly, the uses have changed. And with all due respect, I remember the petitioners, you gentlemen standing there telling us, it's only going to be a bank ATM.
Eleven years ago?
Yes, sir.
We, we also, we also...
And I bet if I pull the minutes out, it'll show that.
In the beginning, we also brought...
And I would bet my recollection is at least as good as yours.
In the beginning, we also brought in the Dunkin' Donuts. We brought in Starbucks and the Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
Very similar to Jimmy John's. And that, and that use was tied in the exact same time as Starbucks. It was bringing in more business.
It was not approved as part, the board never approved a Dunkin' Donuts, just to be clear.
It was never considered that way.
Got me. Okay. That, you're effectively condemning this building, is what you're doing.
We're not condemning anything.
You are, because you're telling us that we cannot lease this building. If we bring in any business in that retail use, that we need...
No, I don't think so, George. I think what we're saying, and what the board is saying, what I'm hearing from the people asking for the condition, condition that was already put in, is get a shared parking agreement from a neighbor and let them see if they can vote yes for it. Nobody said no yet.
But you're making us jump through hoops to do this.
Right, we have to start Monday.
Your own consultant makes you jump through hoops.
No, that's not true. You're, you're putting us through hoops to, to get a signature to get it.
Let me just interject here. You have an agreement for easement that you made back on May 13th of 1986, between Northwest Corporate Center and then, uh, I think the whole property.
Mudgeetel.
And that included this property, which was not built upon at that time, right?
And we, and we said we had that, and also we had that with the hotel, which really needs it, because the hotel has, as Mayor O'Malley said, a night use and we have a day use at the offices.
That's right. That's right. That part's right. Absolutely.
So all I'm saying is, don't make us jump through another hoop.
No, they just want you to update this, basically, with a new agreement. That's not jumping through hoops.
Jimmy Johns in, and then a promise to update it.
Well, you're going to, if you, you may get Jimmy Johns in, but you're going to have to at least update this before you get Jimmy Johns in.
That's what I mean. We don't have time. We've been working on this since May.
But thank you.
I agree.
How long would it take to get an agreement? Don't you, don't you own both properties?
There is, yes, and there is an agreement.
I, I would think that, yeah, but I'm not sure that that's the agreement that everybody's looking for. I think they're looking for an updated agreement, because they think that the property that you're on now was not included in the original agreement. Is that right?
Yeah. Uh, I, I think the analysis that was done comparing the legals is that the shared parking agreement is for where the hotel is and where Ricky Rockets is. And it did not go, um, south of the access road. And this property is south of the access road, so that parking agreement would just have to be amended to include the, um, the parcel that we're talking about now.
All right, so we give a letter as...
Well, no, it's not a letter. It's, it's an agreement that is signed by the owners and the lien holders, uh, subordinating, uh, their position to the agreement, that is then filed with the Recorder of Deeds. And it's a permanent easement that runs on both parcels of property. That's what this document here is requesting.
Is there anything else? That's all. Anything else, Chairperson Coombs?
The other thing that I had pointed out at the meeting was, in their traffic study on the queuing, they did it at the window, whereas I think that the backup at queuing is going to occur at the menu board, which is on the southwest corner of the building, rather than the southeast corner.
Okay. Anything else from the board? If not, we do have a motion, a second. You want to pull the board, Madam Clerk?
No. Let's understand what the vote is here.
Pull the denial.
Yeah, vote to sustain the...
A yea is to deny.
Yeah, a yea is to deny, essentially, yes.
The old yes means no.
They're voting to sustain the, uh, yeah, the, um, commission report, or not the commission report, whatever your desire may be. Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Here we go.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Um, trustee Stanton.
Nay.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Nay.
Trustee Mills.
Nay.
And Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Any two thirds to overturn it, right?
Okay. I understand that a nay was a yes, or I don't understand.
Nay was voting on, on your behalf.
Yeah. A nay was a, a vote to give you your request. A yes was a vote to sustain the finding of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We have more nays. I didn't count.
We have...
You had more a's than nays. You had four a's versus three nays.
So it upholds it. So it upholds the deny.
You need a supermajority overturn it anyway. You wouldn't need five, right? Yeah. You wouldn't need, had to have five votes in your favor to carry, because the commission had, uh, voted against any of the request.
So what do we do?
Well, the motion, your request is denied.
So I agree with George. It has effectively condemned the property.
Well, I don't think anybody else agrees with you and George on that matter. That's not the case at all.
It, it does, because we, um, can I ask one other question? What, uh, trustee Stanton said was that, uh, we should do an agreement, right?
Well, I think that was part of what we were voting on already. It was already in the conditions. So, uh, the other four members that voted, uh, to uphold the Plan Commission still didn't want to, or believe that the Jimmy Johns was the right product to go in there.
Trustee Mills?
Don't they have the right to also come back at the next Village Board meeting to ask for reconsideration, or possibly to remand it back to, to planning and zoning? And I do agree, you had a lot absent that night. Unfortunately, you have a lot of people not showing up for your meetings again.
Yeah.
Which is a shame, in all ways, in all respects. But that would be an option that they had to.
Sure. Okay. Anything else, Chairperson Coombs?
Just a question. Do we need to even vote on D then?
I think you should.
We should still do it? Okay. Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend for approval a request by a task of Bank and Trust Company, trust number 12551. Owner in Stonegate Properties, Inc., applicant for a variation under section nine dash three dash eight dash M dash 10 dash E dash one of the zoning code to permit a third 11-square-foot menu board sign and an additional ground sign, three-square-foot speaker post on the property located at 2061 to 2071 North Barrington Road, with four conditions. The vote was two a's, four nays, five absent.
Chair, accept a motion.
Excuse me, isn't this the same that, that C was? So why, why is it coming up for a vote on D?
According to the signs.
It's the sign, the sign package part. So you could go ahead and vote on it as it is, and whatever, yea or nay, but it really can't be a yea, since there was a denial in the other way.
Right.
Or you could vote to table it indefinitely, and it could just go sit out there, if there was a motion to do that. But that's, that's not usually the best way to handle these things, though.
No, no. No, I, to answer your question, this is kind of a ride-along to the prior vote that you had. The prior vote was for the use that you understood. This is just for the signs that went along with that use.
And the outdoor patio.
Yeah, well, ancillary, ancillary rights that went along with the prior, uh, vote. So I, I don't know if that answers your question, but they're kind of the same thing. It's going towards the same use.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to uphold the, uh, Plan Commission's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Mills?
Well, the first condition actually says sign variations only valid in conjunction with the site plan approval. So...
Yes. You know, I, I think it would be best if we just...
To vote on it, okay. Yeah, that's fine. I agree with Corporation Counsel. Okay, any further discussion on this?
So this is another yes, no?
Right. Vote aye, you're voting to, uh, sustain the finding of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You call, call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Nay.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Nay.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
This is, um, a request by the petitioner for reconsideration of an item denied November 13th, 2017, special Village Board meeting regarding, um, a request by Poplar Creek LLC, owner and Stonegate Properties, Inc., applicant for an extension of a special use amendment under section nine dash eight dash two dash C dash nine zoning code to allow retention of an outdoor patio area on the west side of the Stonegate Conference and Banquet Center, located at 2401 West Higgins Road, with six conditions. The original Planning and Zoning Commission voted nine a's, one absent.
Yeah. Mayor?
Yes.
First, we would need to actually vote to reconsider this. So that needs a separate motion than the actual approval.
Right, yes.
And the only ones that can vote for reconsideration would be those that voted in favor of the denial. So I will make the motion that we reconsider, um, the request.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second for reconsideration. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye. See none, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Pose, B.I. seven.
Okay, now you can have the request come up.
You want me to read it again?
No.
No, you don't have to read it again. This is to reconsider the denial that the village board voted on. Someone wanna make a motion?
I make the motion. So moved.
Oh, we just did that.
Yeah.
I know, you already voted on the motion to reconsider.
Reconsider, yeah.
Okay, I might have misheard you.
Okay.
Well, then we don't need another motion, because you made the motion you seconded.
Yeah, but now we need a motion.
The motion to reconsider only puts it back on the table.
Now we need a...
The original item now is back in front of you to dispose of how you see fit. This is a do-over. This is a...
Okay, I still make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we still have a motion to second. Any further discussion on this?
Well, we had...
Trustee Mills.
I'm sorry. There were several questions that came up last time, as I recall, and the petitioner was not in the audience at the time to address those questions. And I know several board members up here had questions. I think some of it had to do with the condition regarding repairs that needed to be made for code enforcement items. And maybe we should start with that.
And I believe in the planned commission vote, the repairs were supposed to be done by then.
By November 15th.
Yes.
Yeah, and that was the condition.
Okay.
My name is Doug Altenberger.
That's not on again.
It's on here. Are there testing...
Okay, so Doug Alten... Sorry. This is a little short for me, too. Doug Altenberger with Stonegate Properties. I apologize for last meeting. It was a miscommunication. And today, I'm here to answer any of your questions. Also, I brought Charles Baptis, who's the general manager, who has been working on many of the corrections and outstanding issues that the staff have brought to our attention. Our intent is to continue to fix a number of things, and I was trying to get that done by sometime in December. There was some pavilion and a couple of things that we needed to be fixed, as well as some other open items that we will both here gladly answer any of your questions.
Any questions?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead, Trustee Gata.
Well, you know what? They, I have a sheet in front of me that says the major violations. And staff, was any of those taken care of at all, or looked into, or started?
I have not. This would address things such as pavement condition, trees that were removed, stairs that need to be repaired, things like that. The, nothing has changed since last Monday's meeting when we talked about it. So we have not seen any progress on those issues.
Is there a reason, petitioner?
Well, we did do a number of items that we fixed. And Charles, maybe you could go over some of the items.
I believe we approached eight, seven or eight of the 12 items that were requested. A number of the items were basically weeds and conditions of the appearance of the facility. A number of the concerns were some of the landscaping that was amended and changed. There were some structural issues on the rear of the building that had to do with a landscaped area. Those have been corrected. The painting and the appearance questions have been addressed to the best of our ability at this time. There are still a couple of things that are in progress. The retaining wall that surrounds the fountain is a larger project than we initially thought, and that will take some time. That would actually interrupt some of the business that we have, that we're projecting.
Also, we, a couple of items was the parking lot. We did redo the whole front of the parking lot. In talking to Pete, one of the things that he wanted us to address was the back of the parking lot where the drive, where the drop-offs are, along with the fountain and the landscaping. I was trying to get the blacktopping, I couldn't get done because of the staff, because of the weather. And then the foundation, I did, even in front of the committee, I told them that there was, that was gonna be a major undertaking, and that's something that we would need to do plans and work with Barrington Pool. And I never told, promised that I could try to get that done by the end of the year. That would be impossible. We'd probably have to redesign the whole thing and, or do something there. That's a big undertaking. But the, so my point is that we did do a number of items. We did try to address. And then also, there's some things with the pavilion that Charles is trying to do right now to fix that as well, a couple of minor things, but that we're addressing. So these are things that are ma, a lot of the stuff is maintenance, and we do it, you know, we've been doing a lot of this work. Some of the stuff that they done in the summer was the landscaping company we had, and they just didn't do a very good job, and so we let them go, and then ended up doing some of the stuff ourselves, as well as hiring a new landscaping company.
May I interject for one second? Pete, do you have a list of what was supposed to be done and what hasn't been done, so that Doug can then say whether it is done or is going to be done, and when?
Can you read it into the record?
Sure. And some of this is paraphrasing, because we have sent various letters and done re-inspections over time. But with regards to the pavement condition, the drive around the west, east side of the building, around the south side of the building, and the entire west parking lot needs attention. Some of it's pavement crumbling. Some areas, there are curbing that has deteriorated or broken. And the west parking lot, the striping is, for the most part, faded, and there are some areas that need to be addressed from a patching of the asphalt. The east side of the building, the driveway, is essentially disintegrated completely and needs major repair work.
All right, why don't we stop right there and ask Doug whether or not he's done anything regarding that?
Good point. Well, it's not disintegrating, but we are unable to be able to do that before the blacktop people, you know, shut down. So anything that would do wouldn't last through the winter, so we were gonna address that in the spring. Which, I work with staff all the time, you know, we constantly are, for example, we had a light that went out, and we're trying to get the conduit to fix on that as well. So there's always maintenance things that we're doing. But as always, we try to address those things, and we'll work with staff and get this list done. We already did a number of things like...
Doug, hold off one second. Let's go through the list one at a time, and then you can address each one, so that we know what's going on.
Evan Staff, wait one second, though. From what I've been told, that the asphalt plants, they'll stay open this week. They will close after this week. So if they wanted to do anything, they would have had to done it or have it done this week. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes. I don't know the exact date they'll be closed, but we are at that time of year, based on weather conditions, yes.
And some may be closed. Now, as we related to the board last Monday night, there are a series of these items that 100% could not get done this year, at this time of year. So if the board is going to reconsider, from staff perspective, we would recommend that certain deadlines be placed on some of these to give the petitioner time to do them when the plants are open, when they can be accommodated and get done. And, you know, we do have a full list of those items, and we're prepared to share that, depending on what the board wants to do.
Trustee Stanton wanted to go through the list.
I did.
Yeah.
There is a stairway leading emergency exit from the back of the building that is constructed of metal or steel that is deteriorated to the point where it's an unsafe condition. Some of the risers on the stairs have rusted away to the point where the stairs are not completely supported. That's something that, from, based on our last inspection, has not been addressed.
Now, Doug, what have you said to that? Have you done anything in regards to that?
Charles was...
Maybe you could make a comment. Into the mic.
Speak into the microphone, if you could, sir.
Certainly. My apologies. The upper levels of all of those stairs have been repainted. All the rust has been removed from the top of those. The last shortfall, the last actual step, needs to be replaced, but 85% of that stairway has been taken care of. The last 15% has to be done yet.
When was that done?
That was done, that was done within 10 days of me getting this list.
Okay.
And I believe, just for the record, the original list, I think, was provided in July. The violation letter, I think, was dated July 21st.
What's next on the list?
Next on the list, there are approximately 46 shade trees that have been removed from the property. Forty-three trees, and there's three dead ones on the site. So I think there are 46 trees that have been, pretty much all the parking lot islands, and a good number of the ones around the perimeters. I put this in the major category because of the sheer volume of trees that have been removed and not replaced. And I think you can address, you had talked about trying to get some of that.
If you would, we took pictures, but on every island, we put in, I forget the name of the low-growth sumac in there because of the salt and everything in there. So it blooms in the summer, and it looks gorgeous. So we were, you know, we tried to go back to staff and say, listen, we understand that there are some trees along the pond that would need to be addressed, but we want them to maybe reconsider the islands because of this low-growth sumac that seems to really prosper. And we put in also some, the tall grass and...
There are several, several islands that have had ornamental grasses that have been planted over the last six months.
That's in place of the trees?
Correct.
Those are in the islands?
In addition to. The ornamental grasses are in addition to the low-growth sumac that's been planted.
So in essence, they amended their site plan to change landscaping, even though the landscaping is a formal approval by the village board. So they, if they had gone through a site plan amendment, or a minor site plan amendment, it might be fine, but that didn't happen.
Right. Yeah, these are, these are code-required trees that would require a waiver from the board, so it would have come back through a committee and board discussion for you to make the decision on that change.
This number.
Yeah. What else you got, Pete?
The petitioner mentioned the front retaining wall along the pond is, it's up against the drive aisle, and the front portion of the wall, I'm sorry, up against the fountain. The wall is coming apart from the fountain and leaning. I understand the fountain work can't be done, but it is up against the drive aisle, and we believe that something should be done to shore the wall up or something, so it doesn't, ultimately, it appears it could just fall into the drive aisle. They don't necessarily, although the fountain was approved, they don't necessarily have to have a fountain. It's not a village requirement, but obviously, what's there needs to be maintained.
And Pete, we don't disagree with you. We just, it's hard to get that done, you know, before the, with Barrington Pools, now with the winter in, we'll have to do it in the spring, which I expressed to the committee before.
What else you got, Pete?
I would, those are the ones I would consider more major. There is still some additional painting, rusted areas, deteriorated, you know, just more aesthetic items that need to be addressed, some cracked curbing. The rear landscape area against the back of the building, again, they removed a, there were a large number of shrubs and a landscape retaining wall in the back that is kind of deteriorated. They've shored it up, but again, have not really replaced things the way they were originally approved by the board. Typically, that kind of change, again, would be addressed formally with a village consideration, but that did not happen. I mentioned the west parking lot striping, which is significantly faded, needs to be restripped. That basically covers the list.
Trustee Mills.
The brickwork out in front by the fountain. If you didn't work on the fountain right now, can't you at least do something to shore up that wall?
We could work with Barrington Pools to do, to address that, yeah.
I would think that would be more masonry-type person.
Well, Barrington Pools is the one that we've subcontracted out with, so...
For the fountain, but also for the wall?
Oh, for the wall as well, yeah.
Okay, 'cause that...
Need to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That wall is integrated with the pipes inside the supply for all the fountains, and it's all part of that wall. So with the cold weather now, you get freezing in there, and that's what's cracked.
Yeah, but you can, you can possibly do, have them do at least some of the masonry, so it doesn't, you don't want that falling...
The masonry's a problem, what, no, it's...
Because you don't want it falling down on cars coming into your driveway.
It's connected with the piping in there, but as Doug said, we're working with Barrington Pool.
Okay, but we've, this has been an issue since July of last, of this year. We've gone through some good months where some work could have been done on that, too. So that's all I've got on that.
Other thing is, with the trees, Trustee Mills, the salt, if we...
Sure.
I mean, if we put the same trees in, I think we should consider, what have we put in there? You call it sumac?
Low-growth sumac, who's installed.
If, that's what I would propose, because it's killed 42 trees.
Right, but as...
It's right in the parking lot.
As they're telling you, it should have come back through the village.
We had no idea that.
Well, unfortunately, it's something you need to be aware of when you're changing something major like that. Forty-six trees is a lot of trees.
Yeah, to lose because of salt.
But that should have come back through for a variation then, too.
We had no idea.
Trustee Palafas, you had something.
The main issue I had last week, to be quite frank with you gentlemen, is, a letter was issued July 21st with a deadline of November 17th or somewhereabouts, which is four good months. According to Chairman Combs, there wasn't participation in the last meeting for her committee. There wasn't anybody here last week. It didn't, I didn't get the feeling that there was an overwhelming sense of collaboration, which tonight's discussion has verified for me.
Well, we, again, we worked with the staff. We've made a lot of, we fixed a lot of things. We did, redid the whole front of the parking lot that cost us $50,000. I mean, we do things with maintenance. I mean, we're fixing the pavilion. There's, it's a big structure, and, you know, I apologize for the trees. I thought we were doing something nice. We should have probably gone back with the committee. But, you know, our intent is never, I mean, I've been coming here for 30 years, and, you know, you guys all know me, and, you know, I've never, ever disrespected you, or the staff, or anybody. And I apologize if I wasn't here yesterday, you know, last week. That was never in my intent. And, you know, I have, you know, we are trying our best over there. We do have a budget. I had Charles do a lot of work. The fountain's a probably $100,000 thing. It has to be done right. We took us two years to design it. We'll fix up the things that you need to be fixed up. The parking lot, again, we spent another 50, 60 grand on it. The west parking lot, we're gonna address that in the spring. These are things that we have to do for our clients where they don't come. And I apologize if, for some strange reason, we're giving anybody on this board that there's no sense of urgency when that's not really correct. And again, I apologize for not being here. I was under the impression that I was trying to get a little bit more time to get more things done before the meeting, and that was my intent. And so, again, we will get this stuff addressed, and we'll get it done. I didn't know many of this was an issue, but it sounds like this has been brewing for a while. And, again, I apologize if, for some reason, we didn't address these things a few years back. But, you know, our intent is to have a first-rate facility and do it in a way that everybody's proud in this community.
So I appreciate those words, and the behavior seemed uncharacteristic, at least in the 12 years I've known you gentlemen. So that was really, from my perspective, you know, what I was seeing and why I was voting the way I was, because that location, since it's been built, has been a crown jewel of the village, and it seems like it's, it's had a steep taper in recent months, perhaps year, I don't know.
It was a nice compliment. We had most of the events, when we were going through the programs, we're at the Stonegate, we make the price right, and we try and be the number-one spot.
Oh, no, absolutely, you guys have been great partners, you know, in terms of that building and...
Thanks.
And whatnot. So, like I said, the behavior seemed uncharacteristic. You know, our staff is challenged with getting timelines and whatnot, so that's, that's why, you know, I took the position I did. So I appreciate it, Mr. Altenberger, for your comments.
Trustee Mills.
Trustee Palafas took some of my words away, too. This is in no way an attempt to cause you problems, however... being such a gem and a prize in our village, the deterioration not only takes away from you, but it takes away from us. And we've been gathering that that they were, staff was met with a lot of nothing going on. Well, it's a fact. From July till now, yes, some of those things are costly. But it's the price of ownership, too, that you have to maintain your property. Some of that stuff has been neglected for a while to be in this condition. We want the best for everything, because it is the entryway to our village that comes past your place, and we want to be able to be proud of it, too, just as you are. And one of the things that came up last week, too, was how often during these winter months is the tent used? Do you have many events coming up in there?
Actually, through the way we look at these, these things are how many events have made a commitment over the next 12 to 18 months?
Right.
Right now, we have 30 events that are scheduled and slated in the pavilion.
Over the next 12 to 18 months?
Over the next 12 months.
Okay.
All right. Immediately, there are four events that will be happening the first two weeks of December. There are three more events in the first two weeks of January.
Because it gets awful cold out in that tent in the winter, too.
Yes, it can. Yes, ma'am, it can.
I've been at some things out there. If this board were to reconsider this, and we put some type of a deadline on, I think, you know, that might be something to get these major issues resolved before we gave you the final okay. How would, you know, what are we talking? Maybe when plants reopen? Possibly mid-May at the very latest? Could we?
Yeah, maybe June 1st or something.
June 1st.
Are you talking to be in compliance, or were the plants open and they can? The asphalt would definitely be open by that date.
Yes.
But the one item that I would definitely say would be a concern beyond, well, the two items. One would be the fountain
That's-
and the retaining wall that's tied to that, and frankly, the landscaping. A lot of the trees, depending on what the board would do in terms of allowing the amendment to the site plan, some of those trees you wouldn't want to plant at certain times of the year. So but we could work around those two items with the, with the date you set.
Now, this original motion was for a five-year extension. Can we do a shorter extension pending these items being resolved? Just to keep it in business.
You could potentially even do one that says, and if they are, it's automatically, it comes back to the board
Right.
to extend it for the balance of the five-year request.
And that's what I think several of us thought last week, but we wanted to hear things from your mouths on it. I will leave that open and see what other trustees say.
Trustee Palafas and trustee Gata.
Sounds to me like the petitioner has some work with our staff to do. I'm okay with a six-month extension, maximum.
That way-
And then a resettle or true-up, if you will, six months from now for a longer extension to see you know, the progress we-
Six months, you're only taking it to May. You might want to do June, just-
Seven months, eight months, whatever the months are.
A good date, sure.
You know.
First.
I would say July 1, June 30, July 1.
That gives them plenty of opportunity to get the-
So July 1, 2018 is, is what I'd be comfortable with seeing.
This would be a motion to extend their special use till July 1, 2018, is that?
With reconsideration at that point.
Yes, sir. That would be my motion based on, you know, what I've heard and seen.
We had, we do have a motion on the first one.
We have a motion already.
To amend it.
Yeah.
Or withdraw that first one.
Trustee Gata and trustee Palafas, second.
I'll withdraw for a new motion.
I'll withdraw, also.
The trustee Gata, you had something.
Well, yeah, because but they, Charles just indicated that they have bookings already through the middle of January. And one thing is, we do not want to hurt their business in any way. And and as long as it's the way I look at it, a safety factor, all right, that's important, because you're going to have all these people coming in here. The safety factor, even if it's just shored up, all right, just to hold it, would be fine. But I agree also, this way, not to hinder their business and to put it, let's say, June or July, but with the assurance from you